Time is six fifty-nine, and I'd like to call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for the city of Ferriesburg Thursday, July tenth, twenty twenty-five. We'll call attendance Craig.
Vice Chairman Milligan?
Here.
Board Member Holly?
Here.
Board Member Lyons?
Yes.
Board Member Dewitt?
Yes.
This time, I'd like to invite Nicole to join as an alternate. All right, moving on to agenda item number three, consideration for approval of the June twelfth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes as printed. Court?
Second.
We'll call vote please.
Board Member Holly?
Yes.
Board Member Lyons?
Yes.
Board Member Dewitt?
Yes.
Board Member Larrabell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Milligan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Agenda item number four is public comment. This is a general public comment, not specifically pertaining to any of the two hearings we're having later tonight. If you have questions or comments about those, please save them for the appropriate public hearing, but if you have something in general you'd like to bring up, please come up to the podium.
Hi, I'm Jim Menrick, eighteen nine seventy-four, North Shore Drive, and it's not on the agenda because I was slightly late Monday morning getting here, but I have applied for a position on the ZBA, and I would like for you guys to consider me when the time, appropriate time comes. And I had a little, I've not been on the board before, but my wife was on the ZBA in the mid-nineties, so I have sort of a pretty good idea of what, what happens here. And so I think I'm capable and have the ability to perform the job, and would like for you to consider me again. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable. I just got a couple of questions for you, Jim.
Okay.
Anybody that I personally approve for the ZBA has to go through the county, it's a ZBA, was it planning and ZBA, of course?
Citizen planner.
Citizen planner. That's something that if we were to appoint you, that I would ask you to do, period. And you can do it online, it's not a big deal, but that gives you the basics in law as to what we have, what we can do and can't do.
Okay, actually, that's very good, any training is quite welcome.
Thank you. I got a question, Craig, why isn't it on the agenda?
We received the application Monday or Tuesday this week.
So?
Agenda was already printed.
Could I make a motion then that we include Jim Menrick on the agenda as agenda item six A, and to discuss and move to approve or disapprove his membership as a full member of the zoning board?
You can make a recommendation to City Council if you amend the agenda, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we, you made a motion, but six A?
Yeah, six A.
Seconded that motion. We need a vote on that, Craig?
Yes, please.
We'll call vote.
Board Member Holly?
No.
Board Member Lyons?
Yes.
Board Member Dewitt?
Yes.
Board Member Larrabell?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Milligan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, seeing no further public comment this time, we'll go ahead and close it. We'll move on to agenda item number five, selection of chairperson for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Your Honor, I would nominate you as the chairperson for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that.
We'll call vote please, Craig.
Board Member Lyons?
Yes.
Board Member Dewitt?
Yes.
Board Member Larrabell? Board Member Holly?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Milligan?
Stayed.
Motion passed.
Moving on to agenda item number six, selection of vice chairs person for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Your Honor, I'd name Joel Lyons.
I'll support it. We'll call vote please, Craig.
Board Member Dewitt?
Yes.
Board Member Larrabell?
Yes.
Board Member Holly?
Yes.
Board Member Lyons?
Recused.
Vice Chairman Milligan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, moving on to agenda item number six A, recommending Jim Menrick to be appointed to the ZBA. Any discussion or accept a motion at this time?
I'm interested in seeing his application, I guess, before that was the one I voted no.
Craig, can we take a short recess while you give his application? How can you be all qualified? Yeah.
Yeah, you did all the work for nothing, I don't see it.
Jim, why don't you come up to the podium if you would? Okay, you're applying for the permanent vacant position, correct?
Permanent position? The position expiring seven one twenty-seven, if I read it right.
That's, that's a permanent position.
Permanent, correct, yes.
I remember. You will commit to me that you're going to take the course?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
You do live in the community for at least nine months of the year.
How about twelve months? So I've lived here since nineteen eighty-six, but we are full-time, we don't head to Florida, so we are here twelve months.
Very good.
So as you'll notice, as you'll notice, I'm currently on the brownfield commit, or brownfield authority also, so I do have a little experience with city.
I would make a motion to approve Jim's appointment to the ZBA, permanent membership expired twenty twenty-seven, Craig?
Yes. It's a recommendation to City Council to appoint him.
Excuse me?
It would be a recommendation to City Council to appoint Jim Menrick to the ZBA as a regular member with a term ending July first, twenty twenty-seven.
That's what I said.
I'll support it. And we'll call vote.
Board Member Larrabell?
Yes.
Board Member Holly?
Yes.
Board Member Lyons?
Yes.
Board Member Dewitt?
Yes.
Chairman Milligan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I think you had another, another person that?
Did I miss anyone that wanted to make a public comment earlier? No? All right, never mind. At this time, I would like to recuse myself from the agenda items number seven through ten, as I'm a neighbor of the property in question in seven and eight, and then there are business relationships for my work for nine and ten. So I'll invite our vice chair to take over from here.
You can't leave early. You're in charge, Joel. You get the hammer, man.
Leave the pen here.
Okay. At seven oh nine, we discuss the notice which is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Ferriesburg Zoning Board of Appeals on Thursday, July tenth, at or after seven PM. The purpose of the public hearing is to consider a request by Thomas Cireo. Is that the one we wanted to?
Yeah.
Yeah. To construct a new house with a fifty-two inch rear, north yard setback, requesting a variance from zoning ordinance section three point two seven O and B and section nine point one five O. The parcel is described as seven oh, seven oh dash oh three dash one five dash two two eight dash zero one seven, commonly known as one six zero seven three Lake Point Drive. A copy of the application is available for viewing at theferriesburg.org. Notice of this public hearing has been sent to owners of property within three hundred feet of the parcel. All interested persons will be given the opportunity to be heard. Written comments can be mailed or submitted to Ferriesburg City Hall at one seven five two oh Ridge Avenue, P.O. Box thirty-eight Ferriesburg, and will be presented to the board. Okay, public hearing. Motion to approve or not approve a request filed by Thomas Cireo?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair?
To construct?
Public hearing.
The public hearing is a request filed by Thomas Cireo to construct a new house with a fifty-two foot rear, north yard setback, requesting a variance from the zoning ordinance section three two seven zero B and section nine point one five O. The parcel is described as parcel number seven zero dash zero three dash one five dash two two eight dash zero one seven, commonly known as sixteen oh seven three Lake Point Drive. A motion to approve or not approve a request filed by Thomas Cireo will be, okay, and we just did the public hearing. Get it out again?
No, now's the time.
Yeah, the public hearing is now open at seven thirteen for comments with regard to this request for variance.
Mr. Chair, this will probably be a time for the applicant to come up and explain his request.
I'm sorry?
Ask the applicant to come up and explain his request?
Yeah, with the, with Mr. Cireo, please come forward and describe what we're, what we're looking at here.
Thank you, I'm Thomas Cireo. I'm looking to get a variance that's consistent with the sightlines that were proposed previously from the home on the point and the two homes on the canal. Basically, I use that proposed area to construct a home that would fit in it without blocking the view. It in fact blocks the view of the people on the canal less than the home that was torn down a few years ago, and it's consistent with the neighborhood. It's a two thousand square foot ranch, an L shape, just like the home across the point is, and it's? Sure, yes, so it's a two thousand square foot ranch with an attached garage. It's an L shape, kind of opposing the L shaped home on the point next to it, and it's similar in style to the other homes on the canal and on the point. It's a, you know, ranch house with a two-foot eve, just like what you see in the neighborhood drive-through, and we were very careful to make sure that we were doing something that would look like you didn't know it was a new house in the middle of this very open point. It'll have a walkout basement that's finished, just like the other homes with lots of large windows and sliders on the back end sides. We also paid special attention to the back of the garage to add windows that are balanced with the house on the garage so that the people from the canal side don't see the back of the garage. What they'll see is something that you don't know if it's garage or house all the way past. Are there any other questions that I should answer in that brief description?
Very good. Any discussion with regard to?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions.
All right.
Seems like a garage is a bit excessive for property. Explain to me why you need a four and a half stall garage.
Well, we have lots of cars. We're coming from acreage with a five stall garage and a pole barn, which is why we've made sure that the garage is four stalls on, four stalls across the front, and the backside has windows to match the house so that from the canal side, you won't know where the garage or the house start or stop. It's an L shaped house, so when you pull up, you'll see the garage one way and the house the other way. There's also really not a great place to put a shed on this property, so we, we don't want to be short on garage space and then have to try to figure out where to put a shed because every yard is a front yard?
Yeah, I went out and looked at the property. It would appear to me that, correct me if I'm wrong, Craig, the purpose of the waterfront setback is to not build another house in front of other houses, correct?
Right, so to keep the sightline even with the neighboring house, so one doesn't protrude farther into the water than the rest of the houses.
So I guess my question to you would be, if you moved that garage, the print you gave us, the garage is further toward the canal than the street. You know what I'm saying? If you moved that garage back, you could clear the sightline of the other houses on the block.
The house is consistent with that back wall of the garage, so if we did that, we'd have to shrink the house and move the garage closer to the street, but we would then be further in than any of the other homes. Right now, the back wall of the garage and the house are consistent with the, the homes next door. Their foundation line would be the same as our foundation line on that proposed setback.
That would, yeah, when we, when we looked at it? It didn't appear that that was the case, but, so are you planning to bring the home, I think what the direction is, that, back towards the street, further than up into the, say, describe that as a turnaround area, which is actually part of your lot?
Yeah, so?
Are you planning to come up the hill then, at that point?
What we're planning to do is follow the same sightline as the homes next door on the survey that we submitted, so that the back of the garage and the side of the house would be that line, and then the house would turn, come toward the other house on the, on the peninsula there. So you'd be able to turn into the garage and still have a front door and a couple front windows facing the dead-end road. So if you have a copy, the dashed line is the homes on the canal, and the other dashed line is the foundation line of the home on the point. So we kind of just went with their sightlines and filled in the, what was left.
What am I missing, Joe? Could you come up a minute, please? I just gotta clarify something. So your garage is in line with these houses here?
Yeah, that's the old house.
Right.
That's what was, so they drew a line from.
And this, and this side of the house will be at the same point as the B house here?
The one next door?
The house on this side.
Uh, that's it.
Okay, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 okay. It's here.
All right. From what this looks like, and in the print you gave us, it looks like you're in front of these houses.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I see that now.
You're aligned there, it's lesser than it, this would all be.
Got you. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for clarifying.
Thanks, Tom.
Any other questions from the board?
You have any? Yeah, thank you. Any other discussion? Discussion from the audience?
Thank you, I'm Ted Booby here with my wife, Sheri. We're the residents adjacent to the L-shaped structure that Mr. Cireo mentioned. We lived there for about twenty-four years and knew the original occupants of the house that was torn down very well. We're in very strong favor of approving the variance as, for a couple of reasons. One is, the proposed house fits extremely well with the surrounding houses, and I agree, it preserves the sightlines, it has the same setback to the south and the east as the original structure did. What's important about that lot, and I have a couple of pictures I can share, is it's not obvious unless you're a landowner and know your lot line where public and private property starts and ends. May I share a couple of pictures with you?
Certainly, absolutely.
Those pictures are on your desk.
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, Craig. I sent it so late. Okay, I'm sorry, I sent them so late, I didn't know you had. But there's a picture with a little bucket on the, on the road, that, that's the beginning of private property, it's well out into the roadway, so many vehicles find themselves coming down the roadway forward, obviously, and needing to turn around. Because there's not a turnaround, our driveway and the driveway of the, of the present owners is frequently used as a turnaround. The picture of the garbage truck shows that when the public vehicles back down, as anybody familiar with the road does, to get our trash or recycle or the new owners, they're well onto our property and their property. What's important about the original design is it preserved a lane and a concrete driveway slash pad that allowed that property owner to drive into the property, go into their garage, back out on their property, and exit only about a twelve-foot egress without coming onto our property. We don't mind sharing property, but it becomes a practical matter for vehicles coming and going, potentially safety vehicles, so we think the variance to the, the setback to the south is important to preserve. Amazon, FedEx, UPS, trash, everybody that comes down, as well as people that are just driving around and come down and need to turn around. I submitted a letter, the present property has been in a state of neglect for a couple of years. The previous proposals were much larger structures, designed with very little in mind except building a large house on a, on a lot. It's a beautiful lot, but it has a very small building envelope. I think the present design is extremely thoughtful. I don't know Mr. Cireo, I know he has a very good reputation in the community, and we support the variance. Any questions?
Other, other comments?
Mason Milligan, I'm a resident at one six zero seven seven Lake Point Drive, which is the adjacent property owner. I was sent here with the other residents that may or may not be my parents to share our support for the variance in question. It's been four, almost five years now since the home was originally sold and property was torn down, and we've seen several versions of what could be built on the lot, and like Mr. Booby mentioned, it's always just about maximizing the house. This variance is extremely reasonable. I sat on my deck this weekend and looked at the stakes where they would be, and the concern about sightlines is non-existent, if you would ask me, as the adjacent, you know, one of the residents there. My folks shared the same thing, we thought that it would be fine. We really appreciate that the current design fits with the neighborhood, and in the words of my mother, is not a McMansion that does not fit the neighborhood and disrupts the flow. So I wanted to make sure I shared with you guys that we strongly support the variance requested tonight, so thank you.
Yeah, board members, my name is Henry Hartung. I live on Harborview Drive. Have each of you had a chance to read my objection letter?
We have, yes.
Okay. As I have stated, this variance request, I think, will have a detrimental effect on my view of the lake and a detrimental effect on my property value. The reason I bought this property over twenty-four years ago was not because of the house, but because of the view. In talking with Craig the other day, I asked him what the current setback is on the Lake Point Bay side, and he indicated it was a hundred and one foot, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, it's a hundred and one foot, and the variant request would reduce it to fifty-two foot. So that would take, that would decrease my view of the lake by forty-nine foot. As well as the ten other people that are on the inside of the cove, or, you know, it would affect us on the top end of the cove. As any board members similarly situated as myself and my wife, I think you would have a problem with this particular variance, just strictly because of your view. We bought the house for the view, and that view is being diminished. When you give Thomas Cireo more, you give me less, and I object to that. That's inherently unfair. So I would ask the board to deny this variant request and make them build a house that is within the current setback. Everybody else is within the current setback, and so should he. I thank you for your consideration and your time.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
When you bought your house twenty-four years ago, was there a house on that property?
Yes.
Okay, that was my only question.
Yeah, but that house was torn down, and I don't know, once a house is torn down, how that affects the setbacks. When you tear the foundation out, when you tear the home out, you, I think, my understanding, you need to comply with the current setbacks, is that correct?
Unless we give them a variance.
Yes, I understand that.
I'm done, yep.
So? The existing house that was there restricted your view probably, what, forty-five feet more than this one is?
No.
But it ain't there now. The existing, the old house that they tore down?
Yes.
Restricted your view more than what the proposed project is going to, correct?
Not to my understanding. No. No. This, this property, you're allowing it to come down 49, no, 52 foot further?
And the old house is a whole lot further out on that point than the proposed new house?
No.
I can see in the picture, at least 35 feet further out.
Okay, my question is, I guess my question is, is I just want him to build within the setbacks that are currently applicable. That's all I'm asking for. I respect the fact that he's trying to build a nice home, I'm not, I don't have an issue with that. My issue is that he needs to build within the setbacks. Period. Everybody else in that cove is built within the setbacks. Would that be correct? Yeah? And I ask that he be, he build within the current setbacks.
The information that we've received from the, from the city community planning group would indicate that he is proposing building his home within the building envelope that falls within the, that falls within the, the request for variance. And also would put him in compliance with what is a new, a relatively new site requirement. And that would include your, your visibility as well. We're hoping to satisfy both yourself, as well as the request for, for the variance. And we will, we are considering all of those things. And, and I can assure you that we have spent a good bit of time in investigating it and actually looking at the site. So we'll, we'll make a, we'll make a fair assessment and, and vote on it this evening. And I appreciate your concern, and we appreciate your making comment.
Well, I appreciate you taking the time, and I appreciate you taking a look at and listening to my concern.
Yep.
And I thank you for that.
Absolutely, thank you. Any further comment from, from the crowd? That being the case, any further comment here amongst the board members?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to read these, I don't know, you don't have to read it word for word, but we've had...
Mr. Chair. Yeah. Yeah, so we'll close the public hearing at 7:32. And I'll be open for further comment, and/or, and/or we can read the...
Your Honor, I would like to enter these letters of support and oppose into the record. I think you just need to read your name and...
Certainly. Yeah, just so, just so you folks are aware, we have, we have read and take note of letters from Mr. and Mrs. Hartung. There's also a letter here from Michael and Julie Gomez, from 16101 Harbor Point Drive, who has indicated that they are not in favor of granting a variance. There's a message from Debbie Murdock, dated Thursday, July 10. And she indicates that she is not in, is not in favor of providing a variance for the, for the construction of the planned home. There's also a, a letter from Jeff and Christie White, indicating their opposition to the, to the plan that has been submitted by Mr. Cireo. Yes?
Mr. Booby, read this in if you would, and I lost Mason's parents' letter.
Okay. The closest neighbors to the proposed building site are the, are the Booby family. And we have a letter from, from Theodore and Sheri Booby at 16069 Lake Point Drive. And I'll read it in its entirety. I think it covers the, the position of concern by everyone. "We are residents of 16069 Lake Point Drive, adjacent to the proposed build at the end of Lake, of Lake Point Drive. We are directly south. We appreciate the detailed building proposal provided for our review. We support a modest building project on a lot with a very small building envelope. The proposed design preserves setbacks on south, east, and most importantly allows the new owners a driveway pad, which allows them to drive into their garage, back out, and exit their property without violating our property rights. This is similar to the previous home on the site. As a reminder, the roadway at the end of Lake Point Drive is private property divided approximately at the drain. And there happens to be a pictorial evidence of that. Many vehicles, mostly commercial, and, and find themselves at the end of Lake Point Drive, turning around on private property. Having an accommodating driveway, as we do, is necessary for private vehicles, city services, vehicles, potential, and potential emergency vehicles. Past building proposals have been substantially larger on a lot with a very small, allowed building envelope, and have not preserved an ability to turn around. The proposed build is in a style typical to the neighborhood. Both adjacent neighbors favor the, favor the variance. The proposed build preserves our property rights and is a better build than any past, and likely better than any future proposal. The, the present lot has been in a state of neglect, causing erosion and a great deal of weed growth to adjacent properties. We have mowed and done weed control in an effort to control it. However, we prefer a modest home as proposed and properly accessible driveway with respect, with respectful owners, which appears to be the case." And that was written by Thomas and Sheri Booby. There happens to be a couple of photographs that was included here, which reference the, the private property turnaround area. And also a little definition of a, of a service truck.
Your Honor, I apologize, I lost a letter of support from the neighbors to the west. I've been fishing through my papers and I can't find it.
We did, we did not receive another letter. Everything that we received is on the desk tonight.
Okay, so they made a public statement.
That's my public statement, correct.
All right. Let's go through the requirements for, for reading the overview, as well as standards for granting. "An application was submitted that requests an average waterfront setback variance. The waterfront property is zoned low-density residential, RG1. The property at the end of Lake Point, of Lake Point includes waterfrontage on two sides, and the average waterfront setback applies to both. Proposal in zoning. The applicant intends to build a single-family dwelling at the lot. Variances have been approved on two separate occasions, however, the development never materialized. Section 9.150 and 3.27B1 require that an average waterfront setback be established by existing dwellings within 200 feet. The average north waterfront setback in this location is 101 feet, and the applicant proposed a north waterfront setback of a minimum of 52 feet. The east waterfront setback of 82 feet is greater than the setback of the building, of the building to the south, and is compliant." And that would be the Booby property. "The required waterfront setback shall be measured from the ordinary high-water mark on a waterfront lot to an imaginary site across the width of the lot, which represents the minimum required waterfront setback distance for the applicable zoning district established by section 9.15. However, where an average setback line greater than required by section 9.15 has been established by existing principal buildings on the same side of the street and within 200 feet of the proposed building, the average established setback shall apply." "Standards for granting of variance. No variance in the provisions or requirements of the zoning ordinance shall be authorized by the Zoning Board of Appeals unless it is found from the evidence that all the following conditions exist. Number one, the compliance with the zoning ordinance shall result in practical difficulties to be exceptional, extraordinary, or unique circumstances or conditions of the land or parcel, such as A, exceptional narrowness of the width or depth of a lot or parcel, or an irregular shape; B, exceptional natural or topographic features located on the lot or parcel, such as steep slopes, water existing significant, water, existing significant trees, or other unique or extreme physical conditions of the land; C, extraordinary locations of an existing building or structure that allows no other practical or feasible location for expansion because of exceptional features of the land; D, other exceptional or extraordinary dimensional conditions or characteristics of land, lot, or parcel." Comment from the, from the housing advisor. "The lot is shallow, north to south, in relation to the deeper waterfront setbacks required for development. As such, the conditions are unique. Additionally, the lot becomes shallower further east, further constricting the building envelope. Item number two, that the unusual circumstances do not apply to most or other lots or parcels in the same manner or, on the same extent to other lots or parcels in the same zoning district. Comment. The issue is unique, only the property to the south is similar. However, the circumstances do not apply to most other lots in the area. Number three, that the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right. The possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be deemed, be deemed sufficient to warrant a variance." Comment. "The variance appears necessary for the reasonable use of land. The proposal, the proposed dwelling is one story from the street with a walkout lower level. Number four, that the granting of the variance will not be of substantial detriment to the adjacent and nearby land uses and properties. The proposed building location is no further north than dwellings to the west. However, it is closer to the water at the shortest point based on the angle of the waterfront. Number five, that the, that the applicant shall not have created the problem for which the variance is being sought. The comment is, the site is clear, and the required waterfront setbacks are subject to pre-existing buildings that establish the average setback. The applicant wishes to develop the property, which could be burdensome or impossible without the variance. The applicant did not create the problem." Number six, that the granting of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest, and that the spirit of the ordinance shall be observed, public safety secured, and substantial justice done for both the applicant and other property owners in the district. Comment. "Variance approval would not award the applicant an unfair advantage or right that other owners do not have. The applicant would be permitted a reasonable use of the property through the granting of a variance which is consistent with the spirit of the ordinance." Recommendation, I recommend all six standards can be met. Please note that any motion supporting or opposing the variance request must specifically reference the ZBA's findings concerning all applicable standards based on the zoning ordinance and recent case law. The minutes and written record of the decision must document the ZBA's finding and conclusions on all six standards.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a, a motion to approve a request filed by Thomas Cireo to construct a new house with a 52-foot rear yard setback, requesting a variance from zoning ordinance section 3.270B1 and section 9.150. The parcel is described as parcel number 700315228017, commonly known as 16073 Lake Point Drive.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Craig, would you call for a vote?
Yes. Board member DeWitt?
Yes.
Board member Louisville?
Yes.
Board member Holly?
Yes.
Chairman Lyons?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, we have a, we have a positive vote for you, Mr. Cireo. And we will continue with our second request this evening, which comes from... Did we sort through all the paper here, folks? Okay. Okay. We have a public hearing, item number nine on the agenda. Request filed by Brian Klingel for an after-the-fact variance for lot coverage of 48.6% instead of permitted 35%, requesting a variance from zoning ordinance section 9.15. The parcel is described as parcel number 70-03-15-127-048, commonly known as 17585 Mary Drive. Yes?
I'd like to...
I find that honorable, yes. That leaves, that leaves us three of us. Okay. Proceeding. Okay, it is 7:48, and we are open to public comments on the variance request by Mr. Klingel. Is there anyone available?
Danny Dreyer, Dreyer Architectural Group, 220 and 1/2 Washington, Grand Haven. I have information here.
Lots of copies.
Lots of information.
Sorry I didn't get these out, but... Lot of information.
I did my own calculations on the permeability.
Uh-huh.
One of the things in question is, is the astroturf. It is permeable.
It is not. Crushed concrete underneath it packed.
There, there's a, an article here that says it's on, uh, compacted gravel. That's not compacted gravel. It's not, it's not crushed concrete either. It's dolomite. Dolomite is crushed limestone.
Is that what you would consider, uh, what's commonly known as ag lime?
I, I haven't heard it called that.
Okay. I'm a fine boy.
I, well, I had also heard dolomite as being crushed concrete. I've, I've used that myself for many years. And I've been corrected by, uh, zooming on the internet that, that there is dolomite that is the stone and it is limestone. Uh, there, there's information there that talks about it. Uh, ash toe ten, number ten is basically what this is. It's anything falling through a, a three-quarter inch sieve. So it's anywhere, anything from the very fines to about a three-quarter inch, which, which is about a four-inch layer, um, over the sand fill. Um, the, the turf itself lists, uh, permeability, a perk rate greater than thirty-two inches per hour. So there's no problem with it feeding the water through. So at that point then it becomes, what is the dolomite? I had hard time finding perk rates for dolomite, but I found perk rates for limestone and it's basically seven and a half inches per hour. Um, that makes it permeable. Uh, the other thing is there is irrigation in this astroturf to, to wash the dog stuff away. So, um, it's, it's planned to be washed so it, the water does permit perk into it. Um, the, the astroturf is also pitched to the stone retention. So any water running there will, will get to the stone retention. Um, the other change that I, I noted is that there is stone under the playhouse. So that is, you know, any water getting around the, the playhouse will get under the playhouse into that stone. And that stone is four to six inch, uh, limestone, which has anywhere from fifty to sixty percent air in it. So, and the larger the pieces, the more air they trap. Um, I, I, in the past, I have designed quite a few retention basins, but with the advent of Elgrill, the Lower Grand River outflow, whatever it is now, it's got a little complex, so I don't do it anymore. Uh, I have a civil engineering degree, so I, I, I started on the dark side and then moved to architecture. So I, I am capable of doing, you know, storm sewer calculations, stormwater calculations. And this site will meet all stormwater calculations, residential grade, um, for all of the, the impermeable that is there. Uh, when I ran the numbers, um, and I did not include the astroturf, I come up with forty point oh four percent. So we're still five point oh four percent over the thirty-five percent. Um, and there's nothing I can do about that. Um, but calculating the, the stormwater for this site, the, the storage system there will support all of the stormwater coming off. So stormwater is not an issue. It's strictly if, if the thirty-five percent impermeable surface is, is an aesthetic element, I can't, I can't argue that. So I can, I can argue the point that the, the stormwater will never be an issue here because of the amount of stone that he has on site. Uh, it'll store the water long enough for it to, to perk into the land. And I, I'm, I'm sorry I didn't get this information to you sooner, but I actually finished it at four thirty today, so, um... But there is information on the, the ash toe number ten, which is basically what is underneath the, the, the astroturf. And there's information on the astroturf that shows a perk rate of greater than thirty-two inches per hour. And then there's some information on limestone and the perk greater with limestone. Now, the, the major difference between the dolomite, which is crushed, is it does not have cement in it. Dolomite, when you're talking about crushed concrete, has residue of, of concrete, cement in it. And water will reconstitute that. We all know that you put dolomite crushed concrete down in a driveway and it's going to get hard again and it will be impermeable. This is not crushed concrete. This is crushed limestone.
Were you responsible for the installation of that, uh, of that substrate material or did you, or have you personally evaluated it and are making comment from that?
I have not personally evaluated it. My timeframe has been short. Um, I was, we haven't had any rain lately, so I haven't been over there after rain, so...
Yeah.
I, I have every belief that it will handle all the rain that you can imagine. A lot of people don't realize that, that when you design retention basins, you design it with large stone. Um, I designed a live working unit in Grand Haven that we cannot tie to the, the stormwater system because it goes out to the highway. And the highway says, nobody adds more to it. So we put the, the storm drain system, the leaching system under the asphalt and we used limestone. And that last storm we had, which was, you know, hellacious, um, handled it just fine. And it was designed for a hundred-year storm and I believe that was, with the amount of rain that we had, uh, was, was probably more than four inches in, in like two hours. Uh, I had nothing backing up there, so I was, I was very pleased with that. And it's very similar to what he's got installed here. Large stone has lots of capacity for holding water and then letting it perk into the ground.
Okay. So you were, uh, you were not involved in the installation nor have you seen the, uh, application personally?
The application for the...
But you, have you seen the, have you seen the application of this substrate material that you have?
Yes. Yes, I have, I have pictures in there of it.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and you'll notice that, that the one where it's being applied has a, quite a texture to it. Um, it, uh, Craig has a sample on his desk that, that is the stone dust that is much finer, but it's also limestone. That is on the path that, that goes around the garage. But what's, what's underneath the, the ash, the astroturf is, is a number ten ash toe, which, which is up to like five-eighths inch stone, so that it has plenty of air in, into it for the water to run through.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So you did this project or you didn't?
No, I did not.
And you haven't seen...
I was brought in last week.
And you haven't seen the project?
I've been there, yes.
Okay.
Uh, all of those, I did, I, I rather than go off prints, I went over to the site and measured all of the, the bark, all of the concrete, the walkways, the balconies, the, the patios. I measured it all so that I would have the numbers. So that what you see in that plan is numbers. I went over there with a tape measure and it took me about an hour and a half to get that. And, and there are, there are pictures showing, you know, the stone underneath the playhouse. Um, I did count the, the, the playhouse in the, um, hard surface, so that it, it is included in that, but it's also included in the retention area calculations.
So you're saying all the, all this crushed stone is limestone?
The, the only twenty-two A road gravel is, is up in the southeast corner. And I, I did not confront that at all. I didn't even count that. There, there's a, a barked area in the southeast corner. There is twenty-two A road gravel under that and that is impermeable. And I did, I'm, I'm anticipating that's going away. That will bark that, get the, get the gravel out of there and bark it.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Uh, Mr., is Mr. Klingel here? Would you care to make comments, sir? I'm sorry?
Sure.
Yeah, sure.
Hi, I'm Brian Land. Um, so I live on one seven five eight four Williams Street, which is directly in back. Um, I'm not the corner lot, I'm the next one over. I hear what you're saying, however, I've seen what's happened when we've had heavy rains and this is before these features were added. I will say that the addition of, is, you know, what's, what he has there has, when we had one really heavy rain, I had water running through my backyard along the, the fence line. And not only did I have it running there, but I also had it running between myself and the neighbor to the north of me. Um, I've never seen water run like that before. I mean, typically we get some ponding at the back, but I've never seen it look like a stream that's going through there. So my concern is, and I, when I read the application here, is applying for additional, um, space on here. So it was four point oh, correct? Now we're going to four point eight, I believe? Um, those features are already there. So why is there an application for theirs, for the features? And he's already built the features. Isn't he supposed to wait till this is, you know, approved before he puts those features in?
Typically, that's what you're supposed to do.
Yeah. So I guess my concern would be, is that it's going to, I, I doubt, you know, what you're saying. I think that, that water is not going to be permeable because the problem is the soil in our area right near there is not very permeable, especially in the springtime when the ground is still somewhat frozen and that. Um, so I, I, my fear is it's going to, to just make that problem bigger. Now, one thing I would propose that could be a possible solution would be, could he run tile? There is a drainage ditch that's on Mary Street. It's across from him and down to the south just a little bit. Would it be possible for him to actually put some tile in that would, you know, take some of, because he's got some hills that go down, actually slope towards my fence. And, uh, I believe maybe he was sloping some other directions. Would it be possible for him to, to maybe add that tile and that would maybe alleviate the problem?
Interesting. Any other questions from the, uh, from the board? Uh, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Klingel?
Hello, I'm Brian Klingel, the owner of one seven, uh, five eight five Mary Lane. Uh, my wife and I constructed this property, um, over last year with a builder. His name's Jim, Jim Dewar. Um, I've heard, heard some mixed reviews on who I am and, um, that I'm a builder, developer extraordinaire and I'm not, so I want to clarify that topic. Um, I'm a real estate agent in the community. Um, I've been told by a few different neighbors that they thought that I am the builder of Marina Bay, which is in the village, which I am not. I'm actually just the listing agent for the project. Um, my company's name is Klingel Homes. That was a play on real estate, selling homes, not, uh, building homes. So I have yet to pull a permit and build a home for myself. The last two homes I've constructed, um, I've actually contracted with, uh, local builders to construct them and I will, you know, at some points get involved with interior finishes and, and/or landscaping. Um, but beyond that, um, I am not the builder that built this home on the site. So, um, I have had some questions brought up to me from the city of, of that being a fact, did I build the home? And I did not. So I worked with Dewar Construction on the build in twenty twenty-four. And I believe that wrapped up. Uh, Craig, did that wrap up in, I think, first month twenty twenty-five? I think we got final permit approval for that. Um, some of the things that I would like to cover quickly and briefly is, um, the property that we constructed, my wife and I use personally. It's a cottage for us of sorts. Um, we do, uh, enjoy that the city of Ferrisburg is favorable towards people that want to let out their properties such as, uh, short-term rental, um, as long as it's a week. Um, and we, uh, did apply for a weekly rental permit and, uh, we did get granted that weekly rental permit. We have yet to have someone stay one night in the property. We have been continually using it throughout the, um, spring and summer months, uh, for ourselves. So, um, other things to note with the property, when we originally, uh, went to go build the property, um, we had a set of plans drawn by our builder, Jim Dewar. And upon coming to the site, uh, he then informed us that the house was actually too large for the home or too large for the site. So we actually shrunk the structure, uh, to fit on the site and that is what we have today that's out there and that's what we got occupancy permit on in January. Um, after he, uh, was under the, in the construction phase, um, he was the one that kind of oversaw the construction of the concrete that was added, sidewalks, et cetera. And I told him that I would probably handle the landscaping in the springtime. So I didn't want him to be involved with all that part of the build because additional costs with having a contractor involved with that, but then also just dragging the build out any longer, he seemed like after a year he was done. He wanted to be, uh, completed with the project. So he is up north, so he's unable to attend the meeting, otherwise he would have attended. Um, I did, um, I did contract, um, in the back of the property, there was some natural, um, problems with the site because it just seemed as though, uh, like the neighbors are saying in that neighborhood, the soil there is a problem. When we started building, we started to realize that water just stands everywhere on that lot. Um, literally when the springtime hit, um, that was a pool out there. I mean, standing water in all elements of it. Um, borderline wondered why it wasn't a wetlands, but it was a buildable light, or buildable lot. So when we cleared the lot, we quickly realized we had to remove the soil on that site to be able to build something reasonable and to build something where the water wouldn't just stand around the house that we had constructed. So we brought in yards upon yards of, or I should say Jim Dewar brought in yards upon yards of fill sand to, uh, build up the site, but only after we had cleared the site of the silt that we felt that was in that soil that was causing it to do the basin effect. All the properties around me, I feel like are still, um, mostly sitting on virgin soil. So I do think that a lot of the soil problems that we're having on heavy, heavy rain days are coming from a little bit of, you know, the front yard of my property out by the bike path is standing water too. So when you, when, uh, my neighbor had referenced standing water in his backyard, I'm, I'm dealing with standing water over the bike path in my front yard. So whether that's a drain off problem or whether that's just the soil in our community, I think that's probably falling in lines with more of a soil in our community problem. So I'm doing, I've done lots with retention, which Denny has, uh, commended me on with some of the landscaping elements, um, by trying to put full gutters on the property and trying to have that drain into a, into a section of the property that mostly actually buffers a different property owner, um, which I actually have a full signed, um, approval for my current land use from the neighbor to the, what would be the west of me, um, along with eleven other residents that have signed for approval or proposed approval for the, um, use of the property. Um, also interesting with, uh, what Denny had brought up is the original rendering that was submitted to Craig on behalf of landscape design showed that forty-eight percent that you guys are seeing on there. That forty-eight percent was just a drone picture that I had taken for marketing purposes for if I was to rent the property out. I gave the drone picture to landscape design and said, hey, you guys were involved with installing the land, the, um, astroturf in the backyard. I was not involved in that whatsoever, but I asked, um, I asked the, the drone image to be used for rendering purposes and that's what landscape design used. It was a rough number that they provided to the city. I did not realize that that was going to be thrown on the agenda at forty-eight percent. And quickly after Denny was on site, he realized that that's quite a bit smaller. So the request for forty-eight percent, I don't believe is accurate. I think we're probably leaning towards a request for closer to forty percent, which is currently what's on site. Um, so to also answer the question, I am not planning to expand or do any more projects on the property. I'm just looking to utilize the site for what its use is currently. The, the items that I did and, um, my neighbor is... The, the items that I did, and my neighbor is correct. I, in, on accident, I built a playhouse that I did not know needed to be permitted. And that was my bad. So I ended up going to Craig and getting a permit for that structure, which it, it fell under the guidelines of what it needed to be. And one of the main things that allowed for me to get that permit was the intended use. It needed to be specifically for the intended use, which is a playset, which that's why there's swings on it, and there's a climbing rock wall on the side there, which you can see in the photos. So the AstroTurf that's in place there, the things I like about it are the fact that it is permeable. I did irrigate it so that we could sprinkle it. And also, I like the fact that it's using less water. I'm trying not to design a house that just absorbs a ton more water, and I already know that that site has water issues. So if I was to put grass there, which is what's being requested potentially, I'm just going to be adding more water to that grass to be able to keep it green all the time. So water, 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 water in that corner year round is not my goal. My goal is to just have what's currently in place. Secondly, I do have a six-year-old, a four-year-old, a two-year-old, and a baby. I built this house specifically on a busy road that also has a not-so-busy road of Mary. So it's a corner lot, which I would hope that the board would consider as a little bit of a hardship for the owner, which is myself. I constructed the home with the builder to fit kind of towards the back and also created a space back there with a playset. The goal is to keep the kids off from West Spring Lake Road. And that is what we're trying to do with this area. My, my fear is if I have to remove that, I would be less interested in staying in the property, because how do I wrangle four children off from West Spring Lake Road with my wife? It's a little bit of a battle, two on two. So that is a little bit of what we have. I do want to share this with you quick. This is a map of all the property owners around that have signed this petition here for me to have an increased percentage on my property, somewhere between 40 and maybe 41% based on Denny's numbers. And this is where they're located. I have actually color code, color coded them. Looks like primary school here, but here's what we got. So I do have one copy of this. I, I didn't want everybody to sign five or six different copies. But that gives you an idea of the 11 property owners around the property that have supported it, specifically to mention the property owner to the west that has signed. There is, if there is any drainage problems or any runoff issues, it would be to that property owner, and he has signed in support of me. He is, he is directly to the west, and if you look at the aerial of my house and you look at watershed that would come off from my house, Brian had mentioned it, the neighbor, that would be the recipient of my water. If there was more of a water concern, he has signed in full support of what we have on site. So that's that. I do, I do ask that we potentially bring up landscape design that actually did the AstroTurf to maybe add, have him answer some questions before more people come up. But do you guys have any additional questions for me?
I do.
Yes.
You were issued a letter on four eight twenty-five, a building violation.
Yes.
Explain that, Craig.
I would have to see the letter. I don't recall exactly where it was for at that time.
Okay. Do you recall that letter?
I don't know which one.
Which one?
Was it the playset?
We've had several.
There was two. Yep. There was one for the playset, right? One for the playset and one for the proposed, or what was stated to me as a parking area? There was two.
That must have been the second letter you got on six five.
Six five was for the patio.
Yeah. That's the same.
Okay. Now, I understand that you made an agreement with Craig to remove that, we'll call it parking area, what, which you covered with wood chips to try to hide it from the city, I guess. I don't know what your thought was. Anyway. You made an agreement to remove that, correct?
We did not make an agreement to remove that. He said it would have to, no. We did not make an agreement to remove it. I was told that I just had to, I, first I got, issued the permit for the, for the play structure, and I was told that that, that stone that was there, I assumed, I don't know, but I assumed it could not be used as a parking area, and the letter specifically stated I couldn't park there. Is that correct? Was that the letter?
There was some discussion about putting a spark over there.
Yep.
And then there was, we had a discussion about the stone being out there and being used as a patio. I think that's what generated the letter from June five.
Correct. Yep. It's the same, kind of the same topic. And I've talked to the, the material used in that section, which is, I don't want to get the name wrong, which is 22A, the stuff that's underneath the bark cannot be there, which we're fine with that. We're fine removing the bark and removing that stone that's under it, and then placing the bark back there. That's not in question. So the two letters I received on that topic regarding that 22A that's under there, that's not an issue. We would remove that.
Okay. So who did your landscaping? All right. Why did you remove a street sign and a stop sign from that Mary Street?
There's not a removed stop sign.
There is.
There is that.
No trucks allowed and a stop sign on Mary Avenue coming to the bike path that you've removed.
There's no, there's no, the, the no trucks allowed sign?
And there's two signs on it on the real driveway that you removed.
The, the, on, on the corner, it's still, it's, yeah, it's still, yeah. The no trucks allowed, they have been backing that area that is the non-parking area. That is where the two property owners on Mary, their Amazon truck drivers pull into that every time they come in my driveway. I mean, that's, that's, I've actually had to physically push one out this winter that turned around on that area.
Well, I, I talked to Sheriff about criminally charging with the destruction of city property.
Okay.
And.
I've never moved the stop sign. Here's what we did. The little stop sign for the bike path, that little one, we painted the post and then put it right back where it was. So.
But the stop sign on Mary coming to 160, or West Spring Lake is removed?
No, it's not. There's a stop sign there. I didn't.
There was no stop sign there. Craig, is there, is there a stop sign?
There was never.
In the city plan at that area that, on the northbound, uh, northbound Mary Street to West Spring Lake Road?
I asked the public works to put a stop sign and put the no truck sign back up.
Okay.
They were, they were not installed.
And to your knowledge, it's no longer there?
I don't, I'm not sure if they got them up yet or not.
Well, I can tell you during the, the inspection that I made last, early this week, that there is no stop sign there.
It's on our public works agenda to get them installed. We know they're missing.
Okay.
Now, I'm not accusing you of doing it. I'm not going to accuse your landscaper. I think regardless, you developed the property and they're missing.
Okay.
I think you should pay for them.
I mean, the stops, are you saying a physical stop sign to stop traffic is missing from that corner?
Two signs missing that were removed in the development of that property. I don't know, and I can't accuse you of doing it. And if I could, you'd be charged.
Okay.
That's a safety issue.
All right.
Somebody comes up to that bike path and doesn't stop and hits a kid, you, you will be named in the suit.
Oh, okay.
Anyway.
Craig, do we have a, do we have a means of replacing that? And how do we go about assessing who's responsible for it financially?
Well, we don't know who took it.
Well, I understand. So I guess the taxpayers are correct.
If we knew who took it, we could charge that person. Unknown at this time, the city is putting them up.
Okay.
Could we, so the city is replacing them at city expense?
Where was, where was the stop sign?
Right at, right at the corner of West Spring Lake Road and, and Mary Street. A stop sign to prevent people from coming directly out of, out of Mary onto the highway.
Which side of the road was it on?
Your side.
Okay.
Your side on Mary before the bike path, there was a stop sign.
Do you have a photo of that or something to reference?
I don't need a photo. I talked to the public works director and he says it's missing.
Okay.
That's all I can do.
There's, yeah. And obviously, we have.
I don't go around taking pictures of stop signs.
Okay.
So. Are you done?
Oh, yeah. I, I was asking any more additional questions?
Sure. Anyone else? Yeah, by all means. Thank you, Mr. Klingel.
That's what I was going to say. Brian Paul, one seven five two one Williams. I'm right at the other street next to Mary. I just pulled up Google Earth in the street view while you guys were talking about this, because this is really interesting to me. And I went back in time on Google Earth to September 2019, many years before Mr. Klingel developed the property. There's no stop sign there on his property. I don't see any stop sign at all on that corner on his property where you guys are talking about it. So if you skip forward to 2021, it's not there. If you go forward to 2023, it's not there. So just wanted to make that point for you guys.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else that is interested in making comment? If not, any, oh, yeah, by all means, come on up.
I'm Matt Baker with Landscape Design Services. I'm a registered landscape architect. We were hired to put the AstroTurf in, so happy to answer any questions regarding the turf installation. It is a permeable product, and it was put over a permeable surface. It, it's designed for canine, for pet waste. And so it's, it's designed to, to be permeable, and so is the base to accept that. So hence the irrigation that's put on it, which it seems counterintuitive that you water artificial turf, but it's to wash it through.
Did you apply the substrate material under there, or was it there already?
I believe it was there already, and we finished graded it and then installed the turf.
Okay. Did you actually do some permeability study on that, on that substrate material?
We did not have any engineering done on it.
Okay. Thanks. Any further comment? Come on.
My name is Lonnie Furlow. I live at one seven five seven five, next to Brian's place, that you spelled. I'd like to pass out some paperwork for you on top of what I've already given you. It was my understanding that the letter we provided was to be read into the minutes tonight? Is that still possible?
It certainly is.
This is in addition.
It's here. I know it is.
Basically, what you're seeing here is the original June 5th memo to Brian regarding the pad. And then you'll see some pictures of the gravel itself, the original building permit, you know, that was approved in December 23, the actual oversight where we're built. Overview, I'm sorry. And then, obviously, Brian, I just got a question for you. On the overview that we were provided, it stated that you're going to remove the concrete or the gravel underneath the bark, and you're going to extend the lawn to that point. Has that changed?
Mr. Furlow?
Yes.
Would, would you keep your comments to the, to the board?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not an engineer, never done this before, so forgive me, okay?
I don't want any, want any things breaking out in here.
No problem. He's bigger than I am. Do you want to read that out loud first, and then I can comment on it?
Okay. We received a letter from, that is signed by a group of neighbors, namely Mr. Lonnie Furlow, who is at the mic here, Michael Walker, another neighbor at one seven five five Mary Lane, and Charles Learned at one seven four twenty West Spring Lake Road.
Before you go forward, I'd just like to say that Ted, Ted next door or across, across from Brian's place is on vacation. He, that's why he couldn't attend. And Mike Walker wanted to be here tonight. He had a personal business he had to tend to on the other side of the state. And he, I'm representing the three of us.
Okay. Thank you. If you have no further comments.
Oh, no, I do have comments.
Oh, okay. We'll go through this then. Hang on, folks. This is a letter dated July 1, 2025, to the city of Ferriesburg. Reference one seven five eighty-five Mary Lane after, after the fact fact variance request, dear board members. I'm presenting these written comments prior to the required public hearing on the above referenced after-the-fact variance request and to ensure that the zoning board of appeals follows the guidance of Ferriesburg master plan and the requirements of zoning ordinance and denies this, and denies this requested variance. The city of Ferriesburg master plan from 2018 makes clear that encouraging the preservation of open space is critical. Goal three of eight of the master plan is the preservation of open space, and the master plan makes clear that the zoning ordinance is the primary master plan implementation tool to implement this goal. The zoning ordinance makes clear that the maximum lot coverage is 35% and does not include paved or hard surfaces. In this matter, the applicant has required an after-the-fact variance, is requesting an after-the-fact variance. The applicant has already installed approximately 7,700 square feet of hard surfaces, the 7,000 square feet detailed in the application, along with the 700 square feet at the southeast corner of the property, which states it will be changing to lawn, but is presently compacted gravel with mulch on top. This puts the current lot coverage at 53%, 7,700 of 14,000. This is currently 153% of the allowable lot coverage per zoning ordinance. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow for 48.6% lot coverage, which is still 135% of allowable lot coverage. I submit that the ZBA has no option but to deny this variance request and require applicant to bring the property into compliance through, through readily available means. It is important to note that this is an after-the-fact variance request submitted by an applicant with a 22-year career in local real estate with experience in 1,900-plus transactions. At best, this violation of the ordinance is surprising, a surprising oversight by the applicant and licensed contractors working on the site, and at worst, blatant disregard for the importance of the ordinances and following the required procedure to request a variance. To allow the application to succeed in and, in an after-the-fact variance request sets a bad precedent and undermines the ordinance and master plan goals. I encourage the ZBA to continue to enforce ordinances as written in Ferriesburg zoning ordinance number 174, adopted April 5, 1999, with amendments through December 20, 2021. These are the ordinances which currently control and impact the matter at hand. Section 11.5 granting of variance reads, quote, "Standards for granting variance. No variance of this ordinance shall be authorized by the Board of Appeals unless it is found by the evidence that all of the following conditions exist." It goes on to state the six conditions. This after-the-fact application for a lot, for 135% of allowable lot coverage, seeks to depict this property as having met each of the six conditions. Following, I address each of the six required conditions and provide evidence contrary to the, to the submittal that this property meets not one of the required conditions. For condition A, applicant states that the previous approval of the site already allowed for 40% lot coverage. This does not appear to be accurate, as the site plan submitted to Ferriesburg from KH Design LLC, dated December 14, 2023, details lot coverage at 30%. Further, if applicant already knew that the proposal, proposed lot coverage exceeded the allowable 35%, the burden was on applicant to apply for a variance prior to construction. Applicant goes on to state that denial of the variance would prohibit the use of, quote, "suggested site amenities." Applicant does not provide a single exceptional or extraordinary condition or characteristic of the property which would meet the requirements for granting of a variance. Therefore, the application for variance must be denied. For condition B, applicant states that other houses in the area appear to have a similar, a smaller footprint. The statement in no way addresses the requirement to demonstrate an unusual circumstance related to the property that would warrant a variance. Applicant fails to demonstrate that any unusual circumstances exist, which do not apply to most other lots in the same zoning district in the same manner or to the same extent, and therefore the application for variance must be denied. For condition C, the applicant fails to state any reason why the variance is necessary for preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right. Provisioning an artificial grass play area and use of a hot tub are not substantial property rights. Further, applicant fails to acknowledge that these previously listed amenities can still be enjoyed by redesigning the driveway and hard surface areas to include permeable pavers and other permeable surfaces to accomplish these goals while still maintaining the required 35% maximum lot coverage. Applicant fails to establish any substantial property right, which would be impaired by following the ordinance and denying the variance request. Therefore, the application for variance must be denied. For condition D, the applicant states gravel areas will still drain and allow for water to penetrate on the site. This is partially true. The area of compacted gravel in the southeast corner of the property will not drain like loose gravel, although no gravel drains as well as turf. Further, this argument ignores the variance request is asking for 135% of allowable hard surface coverage. So this is not a few square feet of gravel. It is still over the 35% maximum, even if all of the proposed gravel were returned to turf. It is actually more likely that this requested increase in lot coverage will result in detrimental drainage impacts on adjacent property owners, some indication of which is already being seen. It is important to note that this property is in the vicinity of the Mary Lane drain, which is critical to maintaining the impact of water drainage in the neighborhood. The only way to determine the impact of the proposed variance would be reviewed by hydrogeological engineer, which does not appear to have been done. The applicant fails to demonstrate that the variance will not be of substantial detriment to the adjacent and nearby land use and properties, and therefore the application for variance must be denied. For condition E, the applicant states that requested items will improve use, maintenance, and visual impact of this site. This is no way addresses the question of whether or not applicant created the problem that led to the variance request, likely because there appears to be no problem requiring the violation of the ordinance. In applicant's own submission, he stated the variance would improve use, maintenance, and visual impact, not allowed for or maintenance, and it is a stunning home, so I do not think that more hard service will truly improve the visual impact. Further, this problem is easily remedied, allowing applicant to enjoy all of the amenities he desires while utilizing commercially available alternatives to concrete and hard surfaces. Applicant fails to demonstrate that they have not created the problem, and therefore the application for variance must be denied. For condition F, the applicant states that the variance will not negatively impact this or adjacent properties in any way and still allows for ample amount of free draining space. As stated in condition E above, there is no professional analysis provided to support that statement. The Ferrisburg zoning ordinance sets the requirements for lot coverage. Allowing an after the fact variance will definitely have an impact on adjacent properties as well as expectations of the citizens that our zoning requirements put in place to protect all property owners are being properly enforced. Applicant fails to demonstrate with anything other than opinion that the variance would not be contrary to public interest, that the spirit of the ordinance will be observed, public safety secured, and substantial justice done, and therefore the application for variance must be denied. Pursuant to ordinance 11.5 granting of variances detailed above, I have clearly established that not one of the six required conditions exists or would be deemed applicable as it relates to the relief sought by applicant in requesting the variance. As the ordinance makes clear, all lots created after the effective date of ordinance must comply with all regulations. The applicant's request to increase maximum lot coverage substantially above the allowable ordinance requirements must be denied. There is no alternative per the ordinance. Therefore, I request that the zoning board of appeals please allow the ordinance, please follow the ordinance and make the proper determination to deny this request for variance. From a community planning perspective, indiscriminate granting of variances is a poor zoning and planning practice. Given the long-term implication and impacts of variances on the master plan, zoning plan, for the community, approval of this variance can change the overall land use character of a particular area, impacting all property owners in the community. If this variance is granted, then it would be expected that the ZBA would also grant variances even after the fact for substantially more lot coverage contrary to the letter and intent and purpose of the ordinance. Obviously, this would create a very situation that the ordinance is in place to prevent. To approve this variation would impair the intent and purpose of the ordinance. If intent and purpose of the ordinance is materially affected, the variance would not be appropriate. Per the Michigan Municipal League Handbook for Zoning Boards of Appeal, variances are not intended to relieve requirements of the zoning ordinance that are simply preventing applications from doing what they wish. Instead, the zoning board of appeals was intended to serve as a safety bell in which relatively rare circumstances where the application of the zoning requirement results in a practical difficulty. However, variances approved without sufficient justification can turn the safety valve into a leak. Eventually, this will erode the overall purpose and effectiveness of the zoning ordinance, particularly when it is commonly known that the ZBA is likely to approve virtually any request. ZBA members must consider and represent the long-term interests of the entire community. In conclusion, I again request that the ZBA continue to enforce the ordinances as written and deny this severely deficient application for variance. I also request that you make clear to the applicant and all other Ferrisburg property owners that the importance of following the zoning ordinance and procedures for requesting a variance by requesting applicant to bring the property into compliance with the 35% maximum lot coverage. This is not difficult to accomplish with the use of many readily available permeable paving options, some of which are detailed with photographs on page 31 of the ordinance and encouraged for better drainage throughout the ordinance. It is unfortunate that the applicant has already exceeded the maximum of 35% and that this could have been resolved prior to the work being completed. However, the circumstances outlined above leave no option but variance denial and enforcement of the ordinance. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Lonnie Furlow of 17575 Mary Lane, Michael Walker, 17555 Mary Lane, and Charles Learned, 17420 West Spring Lake Road, Spring Lake.
Thank you.
Do you have further comment?
Yeah, I'm not an engineer. I have never done this before in front of a board. I pride myself on being a good neighbor and I've had multiple homes over the last 40 years. And most of my neighbors have become longtime friends. And I don't want to take that away from the possible relationship with a neighbor like Brian, but there are certain things that I was concerned with. We had a conversation prior to all of this happening. Obviously, I didn't write this because I tend to be a little bit more concise, short in my comments. But we first had a conversation about the pad on the southeast corner. And we talked about, you know, I thought, hey, this is going to be a parking spot. And basically Ted and Mike had a conversation with Brian in the beginning while I was still in Florida. And his intention was use it as an extra parking space. Now that changed when I talked to him because he said it was going to be a sport court. At that point in time, you had a, what do you call it, a cornhole game out there and a fire pit and so forth. And that was on the concrete or on the hardened gravel. But now you've got bark on top of that, so kind of put lipstick on a pig to kind of hide it a little bit. And my concern is now he's got a fire pit on top of bark. So that doesn't make any sense because if a spark comes off of that pit, then it's going to generate some problems as far as the bark that's underneath it. This is an after fact variance request. You know, as far as the AstroTurf, you know, obviously the engineer knows a heck of a lot more about this than I do. And there may be some reasons for allowing Brian to keep it. But my concern is I've got a hot tub that's going to be within 12 to 15 feet from my living room window. And then also the fact that the southeast corner should be converted back to a lawn as was stated on the overhead overview that you were all provided. Quite simply, I gave you copies of all the square footage and pictures of, you can see where, we haven't had a lot of rain this year. So the rain we did have, you can see where the water is piling up around the gravelled area on the southeast corner. But basically, you know, my thing is that on the last page I have given you, it basically states that very clearly in the ordinances 1150 that you referred to, it says that the applicant shall not have created the problem for which the variance is being sought. Well, that's pretty cut and dry. So I guess it's up to the council of the board to go along with whatever, whether it's a matter of negotiating with Brian a little bit or whether or not. It's out of my hands, as you said. We provided the information to you and you kind of took over from there. You did your inspection, so I don't know more I can say, except I appreciate the opportunity. And I apologize for the length of that letter, but again, I wasn't responsible for that one. But Mike and Ted, if I call them across the street, wanted that to be read in the meeting, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other comment from the community? If you're willing for that, then let's start with the public hearing. A public hearing requested by Brian Klingel for an after the fact variance for lot coverage 48.6% instead of the permitted 35% requesting a variance from the zoning ordinance section 9.15. The parcel is described as parcel number 70-03-15-127-4048, commonly known as 14585 Mary Lane.
Mr. Chair, are you closing the public hearing now at 8:38, 8:42?
Certainly. Public hearing was started shortly before 8:43. Is that good?
Yes.
I'm new at this, guys. Okay, let's go through the the comments from the Community Planning Group Horizon, which was submitted to us on July 7 of 2025. The overview, the applicant requests a total lot coverage of 48.6% instead of the maximum required lot coverage of 35%. The lot is owned Low Density Residential RG1. The proposal, the applicant proposes additional and excess lot coverage, including 80 square feet for a hot tub, 820 square feet of synthetic turf installed on gravel, and 260 square feet for a gravel access path. Zoning and property information, the subject corner lot is conforming as it is 44% larger than required and 20% wider than required by the RG1 zoning district. However, the lot coverage is already non-conforming with section 915 as the house driveway shed and patio already exceed the 35% maximum, currently 40.6%. The requirements are the minimum lot area of 10,000 square feet. The lot is actually 14,400 square feet or 44% larger than required. The minimum lot width of 100 feet in the ordinance, this lot is 120 feet, 20% wider than required. Maximum lot coverage of 35% is the RG1 district requirement. The subject lot has 40.6% of non-conforming lot coverage. Lot coverage is defined as follows, section 2.20. Lot coverage is the percent of a lot occupied by buildings, structures, pavement, and impervious surfaces, including brick pavers and gravel and gravel. Lot coverage does not include surfaces with concrete and plastic grid pavers with large gaps that are planted with grass, ordinance number 307 from 715 of 2019. Section 11.5 standards for granting of variances. No variance in the provisions or requirements of the zoning ordinance shall be authorized by the zoning board of appeals unless it is found from the evidence that all the following conditions exist. That compliance with the zoning ordinance would result in practical difficulties to be exceptional, extraordinary, or unique circumstances or conditions of the land or parcel, such as A, exceptional narrowness of the width or depth of a lot or parcel or an irregular shape; B, exceptional natural or topographic features located on a lot or parcel, such as steep slopes, water, existing significant trees, or other unique or extreme physical conditions of the land; Item C, extraordinary locations of an existing building or structure that allows no other practical or feasible location for expansion because of exceptional feature of the land; Item D, other exceptional or extraordinary dimensional conditions or characteristics of that parcel. A comment, the lot exceeds the area with width requirements for the RG1 district. There were no exceptional, extraordinary, or unique circumstances or conditions that prevented or prevent development in compliance with the zoning ordinance. Two, that the unusual circumstances do not apply to most or other lots or parcels in the same manner or to the same extent to other lots or parcels in the same zoning district. Comment, there are no unusual circumstances that apply to the subject property. Extra lot coverage would provide a singular advantage to the applicant that is not available to other nearby property owners. Number three, that the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right. The possibility of increased financial return shall not of itself be determined if sufficient to warrant a variance. Comment, the variance is not necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of a substantial property right. The lot is already developed, notably with more impervious lot coverage than required by the ordinance. Number four, that the granting of the variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent and nearby land use and properties. Comment, increased lot coverage can lead to increased stormwater runoff and other consistent issues with nearby property. Item five, that the applicant shall not have created the problem for which the variance is being sought. The lot is compliant with zoning requirements and the appropriate maximum lot coverage was calibrated in the zoning ordinance based on compliant lot use. Additionally, the applicant has already exceeded the requirement, such as the problem, and as such, the problem is self-created. Six, that the granting of the variance will not be contrary to the public interest and that the spirit of the ordinance shall be observed. and that the spirit of the ordinance shall be observed, public safety secured, and substantial justice done for both the applicant and other property owners of the district. Comment, granting the variance would be contrary to the public interest because variances should not be granted unless there is a practical difficulty resulting from a unique characteristic of the lot or land. The lot size and width, and the lot size and width exceed zoning requirements. Lot coverage variances are typical only appropriate if they prevent the development of smaller non-conforming lots that could not otherwise be developed. Recommendation, I do not believe any of the required six requirements have been met. Please note that any notion, any motion supporting or opposing the variance request must specifically reference the ZBA's finding concerning all applicable standards based on the zoning ordinance and recent case law. The minutes and written record of the decision must document the ZBA's finding and conclusion on all six standards.
Chair, I'd make the motion that we deny the request and require the back to the thirty-five percent legal lot coverage.
Is there support?
I'll second that.
Uh, given that we have a motion and support regarding the request for, for variance. Craig, would you please ask for, for the vote?
Roll call, Board Member Holly?
Yes.
Board Member Dewitt?
Yes.
Board Member Lyons?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Steve Mason, you're up.
You get to close this meeting.
You're the official closer.
Hand him, hand him the gavel.
Nicole, would you like to join us again? Moving on to agenda item number eleven for tonight's meeting discussion and to take action if appropriate to approve or not approve that there is new evidence in support of the request filed by Gary Neusma to request within one year of the June twelfth, twenty twenty-five application based on new drawings if it satisfies, satisfies the reapplication requirement. Uh, it's referenced to a memo in our packet from the city planner.
I'll move to that resolution.
A second.
Roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, what was the motion?
The motion is for the, uh, uh, Neusma family to, uh, allow them time to resubmit a, a proposal that we can, that we can submit for variance.
Thank you.
Greg, their, their variance has expired.
Their variance was not approved at the last meeting.
Oh, okay.
On North Shore Drive.
I have the last one so I can reapply, correct?
It was denied at the last meeting. Maybe resubmit a, a new drawing. It's up to the board to determine if that's enough changed, to be a substantial change to rehear the case.
Yep.
Notice the motion to, to approve that, correct?
Correct. That is, that is the essence of the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call vote?
Board Member Dewitt?
Yes.
Board Member Larva?
Yes.
Board Member Holly?
Yes.
Board Member Lyons?
Yes.
Chairman Milligan?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, moving on to agenda item number twelve, reports, comments, ZBA members and administrator.
No report.
I only have one comment. What is the city's stance on how contractors use uh, streets for loading, unloading construction material? Specifically, the house in Harbor Point where they've dumped stone in the middle of the street, blocked the street. Trucks are blocking the street on one side. They unload sod there and block the street.
So if they're doing something on the street that is not permitted, we should call, contact the sheriff's department and the police.
So the sheriff's department doesn't do anything and when you call the landscape company, they say, well, we're allowed to do this. The city says we are. Coche landscaping?
Contact City Hall at that time.
I'll send you an email.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, and about thirty other phone calls I got today on it. Maybe thirty-two, I don't know. People are not happy with blocking off the street.
There have been times when you can't get school buses in there. I've sat there, waited for thirty minutes for them to move a whole truck of stone.
Okay.
See no further comment?
Oh, hang on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind, I would like to make a comment.
Please go ahead.
Uh, I just want to make a, a comment to thank the city and, and the contractors involved in the one hundred and sixty-eight street, um, uh, project that they seem to be doing an extraordinarily good job. And as a matter of fact, they've, they're way ahead of schedule and did paving out there today with asphalt. Looks like they have one more coat of asphalt to apply and at which point they, they should be done. I, I do have some question of you, Craig, on what the application is going to be for the, uh, for, for the curb. Where they have applied an actual cement curb in, in some areas. But beyond that, they've gone into the, uh, into the side of the road and I just don't, I just wonder what their, what their plan is for application there. Are they going to grade that out and then apply gravel? Is that the, is that what the contract stipulates?
Is it on the backside of the curb?
On, on, on both edges of the road.
Well, they pave up to the curb and then the backside go fill in, backfill.
Yeah, yeah, the fill-in next to the, next to the, the asphalt that's just been laid. What's the, what's the plan for that? Are they going to, are they going to remove some more that goes into the, uh, into the, the, uh, utilities easement? And then apply more gravel or?
I'll have to look at the drawings.
You don't, you don't know exactly?
No.
Okay. Um, my other comment is, um, were all of the, um, requests for the addition of the mountain of gravel that happens to be on the Brockmire, uh, property, were those, um, properly submitted and allowed?
No, it's going for the planning commission and we're waiting for the applicant to finalize his application.
Would you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's going to go, the, the fill permit is going to go for the planning commission for review. And we're waiting for the property owner to finalize the plans to submit to the planning mission.
So that pile of gravel's been sitting there and it was, it was put there without, uh, without having, um, the, the
Fill permit.
The permit to put it there?
Correct. He's, he's basically going to, it shows it on the site plan that's approved by the city. That fill is going in. We're just quantifying that what is there is, is always approved by city council.
That mountain was approved by city council?
The site plan showed that fill was coming in, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion adjourned.
I think Nicole has something.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that, uh, the violations against my roadside stand were all dismissed because the, uh, ordinance changed. So the ordinance changed to allow neighbors produce to be handed out with our own. So everything's compliant and there's no more need for the ZBA to address that matter anymore. Thank you.
Motion adjourned.
I hit your gavel.
Oh, yep.